Good afternoon. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Tuesday, October 18th, Board Meeting. Can we quiet down out there in the lobby? We're going to begin our meeting with the invocation from Pastor Carter from the Henry County Sheriff's Office, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand, please.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you now for this time that we share together. God, we thank you that you have allowed the individuals to serve in this capacity, to give oversight, to give leadership to our county. God, allow their hearts to be softened now concerning humanity. Lord, we thank you that you have afforded us the things that you have afforded. Now, God, allow us to govern and rule well. Keep us now, God, only like you can. Bring our community closer together. Give us unity that we may find strength in one another. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance
to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, with our nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. The following planning and zoning items were postponed for October 18th, BLC meeting, and they were postponed by the applicants. RZ-21-34, the Alliance Residential Company of Atlanta, and that was in District 2. RZ-21-16, Halpern Enterprises of Atlanta, District 4. Comp AM-21-11, Berry Board of Griffin, Georgia Garrity Investments. And then RZ-21-38, Berry Bond of Griffin McGarrity Investments. Those items have been postponed as requested by the applicants. So if there is anyone here for any of those zoning, for any of these zoning matters, it will not happen tonight. Presentation, there was supposed to be an update from the State Court that is also been postponed to a later time. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. If we could have the County Manager to please come forward. There was an amendment to the consent agenda that added the adoption of the Capital Improvement Element, the CIE Annual Report, and Community Works Program, CWP, update for 2022 through 2026.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, October 18th at 6:30 PM. Under the first item for asset and risk management, we have a resolution approving security camera installation for Work Camp Road Campus and all senior centers in the amount of $214,489 under state contract from Net Planner Systems, Inc., utilizing ARPA funds. Under the County Attorney, we have a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding, an agreement between Henry County and the Board of Education for school crossing guards. Under the County Clerk, we have a resolution approving the 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting Calendar. And we also have a resolution approving the 2023 Holiday Calendar. Under planning and zoning, we have the adoption of the Capital Improvement Element, CIE Annual Report, and Community Works Program, CWP, update 2022 through 2026. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution approving a three-year agreement between Axon Enterprises, Inc., a sole-source vendor, and Henry County Police Department for TASER 7 Electronic Control Devices, ECDs. This new agreement replaces the current agreement and provides a locked-in amount of $157,829 per year, and adds an additional 50 tasers for a total of 246 tasers. The agreement will include the support, training, and equipment of all devices, and can be terminated at any time. Funds are available in the Small Equipment Funds Account. Under SPOS, we have a resolution approving a budget amendment and bid award for construction of the Peaksville Road Phase 2 SPOS 5 Transportation Improvement Project to McCoy Grading, Inc., in the amount of $3,652,625.64. This is located in District 1. And then we have a resolution approving a budget amendment and bid award for construction of the installation of sidewalks for North Ola Park, SPOS 5 Transportation Park Improvement Project to DAF Concrete, Inc., in the amount of $781,464, located in District 3. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
So was the capital, the CIE?
Yes, ma'am, I did read that.
You did, okay, all right, great.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Are there any questions from the Board?
One question.
Yes.
Under the resolution for the park improvement, where's that money coming from?
That's going to be out of SPOS 5, Commissioner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And on, any other questions from any of the Board members? Okay, I'd like, oh, you got a-
Motion to approve.
Okay. Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're going to move the County Manager's item on the agenda to the end. We're going to move forward with public hearing, MC-22-01, Polte Group Atlanta requesting modification to the conditions for property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Lester Mill Road and Bill Gardner Parkway.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and the public of Henry County. The item before you is a property located at the northeast corner of Bill Gardner and Lester Mill intersection, and is approximately 87.13 plus or minus acres. That is shown on the exhibit books, as well as on the overhead projection screen. The property is currently zoned MU for mixed use, with a future land use map designation of mixed use. The request before you tonight is to modify the conditions of a 2018 rezoning request. Here is the site plan for the proposed development, and an illustrated site plan. Here are a few conceptual renderings that were provided by the applicant. These are the homes, and of the amenities area. Here are some comments that we received from various departments, including Henry County Water and Sewage Authority, DOT, the School Board, and Fire. So as mentioned before, this request is to modify the zoning conditions of specifically RZ-18-15, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners on November 27th, 2018, from RA to mixed use. The conditions imposed with the approved referenced a site plan, sorry, a specific site plan. The site plan, as approved back in 2018, allowed for a mixture of uses to include single-family, multifamily, mixed-use buildings, and flex space. The 2018 approval would have actually allowed for up to 360 total units. The request before you tonight is to modify the conditions of the subject property, and modify specifically the conditions of that 2018 rezoning request for the development of a single-family residential development with a total of 143 units. Here is the site plan that was approved back in 2018. Staff does recommend approval of modifying the conditions for the subject property as specified in your exhibit books, as well as on the overhead projection screen. I would like to point out that staff has slightly modified our recommended conditions. Those conditions will be shown in red on the overhead screen. I'll also read a few conditions to include clarifying the language. First change is to Condition 8. The total number of dwelling units shall be limited to 143 single-family homes, compliance with zoning conditions, and development standards may further limit the number of dwelling units and/or minimum lot size. Condition 12, letter D, as in dog, minimum lot size of 10,000, I'm sorry, 10,890 square feet, and G, this is part of the clarifying language, minimum roof pitch of 512, with the exception of front and rear covered porches. A letter H, maximum height, two stories above grade level, with basements and attics permitted. 13 shall be ranch style unlimited to one story above grade only, with basements and attics permitted. Number 14, front elevations of all homes shall be full brick or stone with three-foot masonry water table on all sides. Up to 20% of the side and rear elevation may be on a different accent material, which may include cement fiberboard. Cement fiberboards shall only be used in the soffits and eaves. No vinyl-based products shall be utilized. Again, clarifying language for number 15. All gabled and hip roofs shall have eaves of at least one foot overhang. Number 16, all homes shall include a minimum front, excuse me, all homes shall include a covered front porch with a minimum width of six feet and a minimum depth of six feet. Sidewalk shall connect to the front porches directly to the driveway for pedestrian use. 17, all corner lots shall have side entry garage where feasible, as determined by the Building and Plan Review Department. Condition 24, the homes backing up to Lester Mill Road and/or Bill Gardner Parkway shall be full brick, except gables on all sides. Cement fiberboards shall only be used in the soffits and eaves. No vinyl-based products shall be utilized. Condition 25, public space requirement as per Section 40105 of the ULDC shall total at least 2,700 square feet in size. Public spaces shall be accessible via paved path and/or sidewalk, and shall consist of at least one covered pavilion with tables and seating areas. In addition to a covered pavilion, plazas, courtyards, atriums, pavilions, and other similar public spaces with benches may be provided. The required public space may be divided between the commercial portion and the residential portion of the development. Required public space shall be accessible to the public and located outside of any gates. The public spaces and associated features shall be constructed at the time built or before 50% of the dwelling units that have been issued, have been issued a certificate of occupancy. And that concludes the changes that we would like to make with these recommended conditions. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
What are the width of the sidewalks?
The width? That is an excellent question. So Condition, I do believe it is Condition 6. Owner/developer shall coordinate. Nope, I'm so sorry. Condition 5, the subject property shall be developed meeting equivalent standards, provisions, limitations, and requirements of the Highway Corridor overlay District. Off the top of my head, I don't recall what the, and I'm seeing if I have that information. I don't recall the road classification of Bill Gardner and Lester Mill. The internal sidewalks, I'm sorry, the external sidewalks would be dependent on those road classifications. I apologize.
About the internal sidewalks, and are there streetlights?
Internal would be five feet as required by Highway Corridor, and internal streets would require to have streetlights and street trees. And again, that's all under Highway Corridor.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you put up the previous plans and the new plans?
So this is the previous plan. I'm going to highlight a few things. This yellow here is flex space. This red space is mixed-use development. These are single-family homes, and these are brownstones here with a sort of an orchid here, orchard, sorry. That is the old plan that was approved back in 2018. Again, that's a mixture of uses. This new plan is solely for a single-family development, and that is here.
So because this was District 2, the first plan is a plan that I had worked on with the residents in that area. This new plan, I had asked the developer to wait to work with, because this is no longer going to be in District 2 as of January, and to work with the Commissioner in that area, which will be Commissioner Wilson. So, Madam Chair and Board, I have deflected to work with this whole change in project, and Commissioner Wilson has been working with them since it's going to be in his district.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, you have any comments or questions?
I'll say mine after the public hearing.
Okay, all right, great. Okay.
I'll say that the way it was is the way I liked it. That's the way the community liked it, but I'm sure Commissioner Wilson has done what he needed to do for it.
Okay. All right, so this is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the requested, the requests, including applicant, will have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the Board. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the project? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Hammersham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. We are extremely excited here representing Polte tonight with regards to the proposed project. We recognize that Commissioner Clemens worked very diligently with the community back in 2018 to do the project. However, the developer of that site bowed out of the project for reasons which we have no knowledge of, but the property went back on the market. We came in looking at the site, and Polte felt that reducing overall the number of units available on the site, there were 360 with a mixture of different product type, that breaking that down to no more than 143 single-family detached homes allowed for the development of the site in a way that was less intense than what was originally proposed. We have worked with staff on the conditions that have been presented, as well as speaking with Commissioner Wilson as instructed, and we believe that we have come up with something that we hopefully can all live with. And so we respectfully request approval based on the staff's conditions. We are fine with those conditions, and look forward to hopefully being able to move forward with this project. And we're here to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions from the Board?
No questions.
Is there anyone else here that wished to speak in favor of the project? Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of the project? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Little. My husband and I live at 810 Lester Mill Road. We're directly across the street from this. We're not opposed, we just have a few questions, not completely opposed. Just to clarify, Ms. Clemens, the community was not really excited about the last proposal. We just had to roll with it because we really didn't have a leg to stand on. I had a question. He mentioned something about commercial, and I wasn't aware that commercial was going to be any part of this. The other thing that we're asking as neighbors is we understand there will be a 50-foot buffer on Bill Gardner. We would like the same buffer on Lester Mill as well.
Kenta, what is the buffer on Lester Mill?
Our understanding was 20 feet, but we could be wrong.
Yes, as per Condition 23, southern property line of Bill Gardner, that is a 50-foot buffer. The western property line is 20-foot along Lester Mill. And as a point of clarification, our code does not require a buffer when adjacent to a road. In this instance, we wanted to ensure that proper screening was in place. So we did recommend the 50-foot along the south property line, 20-foot along the west property line. If it is the pleasure of the Board, that west property line buffer can always be increased.
Okay. Are there going to be external sidewalks leading out?
Yes.
And what is the width of those sidewalks?
I apologize, I don't have the full details on that. I will say that there is a planned roundabout at the intersection of Bill Gardner and Lester Mill. In such instances, SPOS will typically install an eight-foot wide sidewalk. And so at the very least, it's going to be eight feet.
Okay. Can we note that in the conditions?
That's all, thank you.
Is that all you have? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of this development?
I just, I wanted to make sure, they just said make sure that the commercial was addressed. We just were unaware of-
Is there a commercial piece?
So this property is zoned mixed use, which does allow for a mixture of uses. The, and I need to go back to the 2018 for a little bit of context. The 2018 rezoning request included that triangle piece on the east side of Lester Mill, as well as the west side of Lester Mill, that small sort of rectangular piece here. This modification request only addresses the triangle piece and not this western portion. As indicated in this site plan, the commercial portion would be within this west portion of the development. But again, the property in question is solely the east portion of this property. Everything, Lester Mill, east.
So what is the commercial piece?
The commercial is future commercial. That has not yet been specified to staff. I will point out that, and maybe Nancy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not believe we can condition the uses of the future commercial within this modification request, given that it is going to be outside of the subject property.
So will it come back before us? So if we approve this tonight, we're approving a commercial piece that we don't know what it looks like?
The zoning entitlement that exists today from 2018 does allow commercial use on the property. That is limited to whatever our ULDC allows under the mixed-use zoning district. If approved with staff-recommended conditions, no commercial would exist on the east side of, on the east side of Lester Mill.
Okay. We're going to try to see if we can get your question answered a little bit better. I'm going to let the District Commissioner speak at this time, because I'm, you know, not for approving something that I don't know what it's going to look like and what it is.
All right, so good evening. Just ask more clarification. So regardless if we move forward with this or not, the original plan can still exist. And so the commercial piece that he's talking about on the west side was going to be commercial already. And so we didn't know what it was going to look like at that time either. So that's kind of, it's going to be there because it's mixed use, and it's part of the development. It's actually required to have a commercial component to it. So I guess you could add conditions if you wanted to to the commercial piece. But again, at this time, we don't have any, we don't know what it's going to be, what it's going to look like, or what's going there.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I'll address that in a second, please, yeah. So I do have a couple of things. On the elevations that you showed, Kenta, was two stories, but we've requested that in the conditions, they put 25% ranch-style homes. You don't have any ranch-style homes listed here. Do you have any available? The front elevations, the ranch-style?
Polte didn't have any available prior, right prior to the meeting when we saw it with the condition, but we are committed to the 25% ranch.
Okay, so you emailed me a copy of it, so I didn't know if you had that available. So let's talk about the sidewalks at the roundabout. Rocky, can you address the size of the sidewalks when the roundabout is going to be constructed? What those specs look like?
Good morning, I mean, good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Yes, like Kenta mentioned, it's going to be eight-foot wide sidewalks on, not only on the roundabout, but on the entire corridor of Bill Gardner Parkway.
But not at Lester Mill?
Not up to, up to a point, up to the point that we, not all the way to the entrance to this development, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And as a point of clarification, one of the conditions, specifically the language reads "subject property shall be developed", meaning the equivalent standards, provisions, limitations, and requirements of the Highway Corridor overlay District, as if the subject property was located within the boundaries of the Highway Corridor overlay District. And so a sidewalk is going to be required the entire frontage of the property on Bill Gardner and Lester Mill.
So what do we need to do with the buffer then? Do we need to, we need to put in a 50-foot buffer up Lester Mill as well?
Staff did recommend a 20-foot. If it's the pleasure of the Board, it can be increased to 50.
Okay.
Or whatever number.
The applicant, if we did 50 feet, that would drastically change the project. We've already reduced the total number of units. And so along the Lester Mill side, we were very happy with the 20-foot, even though it's not technically required. But the 20-foot buffer, we were very satisfied with that, and with the installation of the sidewalk along that frontage. And we will certainly landscape that side and provide landscaping along Lester Mill.
So the 20 feet, what is the applicant comfortable with? Can he go 30 feet?
He said, yes, we can probably do 30.
Okay, we'll change that condition to a 30-foot buffer on Lester Mill. Now, you did mention these conditions, but I want to point these out because this is not common for typical conditions of a lot size. They was presented as a 60-foot lot. We went to a 70-foot lot. And with this type of zoning, they was, you have a minimum of 10-foot setback on the sides. We went to 15. So we did increase the lot size and the setbacks. did increase the lot size and the setbacks. Let's see. As far as the commercial piece, we can set that to the side. It brings it back to the board. We can approve the product that you're going to put on the commercial piece at a later date.
So, yes, sir. Just make that a condition that before LDP or something is issued, that the commercial piece will have to come back before the board for approval.
Okay. We'll add that to condition number, what do we got, 24, 25?
All right. Total condition number is 29. This LDP condition for commercial would be condition 30.
Okay. So, let's add that condition to-
With the commercial piece. For the commercial piece, that would be a total of 30.
Okay. So, let's make that, let's make that the last condition. I think that's all the questions I have.
Is this a gated community?
It is a gated community. We have required them to brick all homes that back up to Lester Mill Road and Bill Gardner Parkway, which is about a total of 34, close. So, all them homes would be totally brick. All the internal homes will be-
A mixture.
All brick on the front, three-foot water table on the outside. We have to cement siding as well. Now, go back to condition number three. Did you clean up that language of the developer shall coordinate with SPOST on condition number three?
That is a condition. So, yes, currently, it reads "developer owner shall coordinate with SPOST to minimize, avoid conflict with future widening of Bill Gardner Parkway." With the SPOST project coming in, it might be appropriate to require that the applicant, developer owner, preserve and dedicate right-of-way for the planned improvements in roundabout.
All right. Perfect.
That's required anyways.
So, Madam Chair, that's all I have. I will make a recommendation, make a recommendation for approval with all 30 conditions read.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the ULDC-am-22-09. It's a public hearing, an ordinance by Henry County to amend the Unified Land Development Code of the Henry County Code of Ordinances regarding the regulation of automobile washes countywide.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and Citizens of Henry County, today I bring to you a ULDC amendment that intends to regulate automobile washes within the county. On this slide, we have drafted two parts to the ordinance. Number one, we'll simply be adding an automobile wash definition to our Appendix A, which is a glossary within the ULDC. And number two is to add verbiage that would separate automobile washes as a primary use from other automobile washes within or outside the zoning district of Henry County by a minimum of 13,200 feet or 2.5 miles. This language is similar to the ULDC amendment this board adopted in 2020 regarding small box discount stores. This slide shows the 2.5-mile radius map and all of the known car washes, primary use within the county and the city's jurisdictions. Staff has drafted this ULDC amendment because we have seen an increased interest in automobile wash development. This map only shows automobile washes that are constructed and operational. Automobile washes are unique in the issue that if these facilities were to close, it is difficult to redevelop or repurpose the buildings for other uses. Currently, we have a total of 15 primary-use car washes in the Henry County and our cities, with six of those automobile washes in county jurisdiction. Five automobile wash facilities are currently going through development or building plans, and one is going through a rezoning process. That is essentially five and a possible new washes since December 2021. Staff would prefer to be proactive and get ahead of this trend to avoid an oversaturation of automobile washes within the county limits. The adoption of this ordinance would not affect properties within any of the city limits or affect automobile washes that are in development or have a zoning application pending. We did receive two emails of contention from a Mr. Will McCall and from Dillard Sellers Attorneys at Law, objecting to the adoption of this ordinance. This particular law firm, Dillard Sellers Attorneys at Law, is currently representing a client seeking to rezone property for automobile wash use. And as they have already submitted their application, they are vested from the provisions of this ordinance if adopted. If the board feels as though a 2.5-mile radius is too restrictive, then that number can be adjusted before adoption. Staff recommends approval of the adoption of the amendment, and I will be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Or do we have any questions from the board? Do you all want to wait till after public hearing? Commissioner, Commissioner Thomas?
You made a recommendation for a 2.5 distance apart. I would like to make a recommendation for a higher distance apart than a 2.5. I think that's not enough. We went through this when we started talking about the small box retailers in this county, and we don't want to be inundated with these car washes everywhere. And we do want the ones who have these businesses to be successful. So, it helps both ways not to have too many in an area. So, I would recommend, Madam Chair, we could consider going up to a greater radius, at least a 3.5 or four-mile radius.
So, can you make a recommendation of one of the other?
Oh, I thought we were discussing, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a recommendation that we increase the distance apart from them from 2.5 miles to four miles each.
All right. Commissioner Clemens?
I have a question in reference to the, I believe you stated that there were five that were in the process of being approved in the county, which will make it 11 in the county. And I see the dots of the six, but I would like to see the dots of where those other five would be. And I have a question, a legal question for Nancy. Are we able to tie them, the five that's in process into this policy? Because I don't know the reason why. If we have the potential to do that, I would rather do that than to have them within a mile apart. Because we don't know where they are right now.
No, the, the five car washes that have already applied for their application, they're kind of already grant, grandfathered into the old ordinance. So, if something is passed today, it would only apply to new applicants.
What's, what's the, what's the legal, what, what is legal, I mean, is there a legal ramification that says if something is already in place before and you pass the law that it has to stay that way?
Yeah, there's, there's actually laws that pertain to that. So, they, developers or what have you, they only have to abide by the law as it is. So, we can't do a law that's retroactive. So-
Okay. So, can we find out where the other ones are?
Yes, ma'am. We, we know where they are. I can get a map drafted if you'd like to look at it.
Okay.
Okay. So, this is a public hearing. Anyone wish to come and speak in favor of this amendment? Please come forward at this time. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name.
Good evening. Julie Sellers with Dillard Sellers here tonight. In, in opposition to the current draft of the ordinance, not in opposition completely to regulations, that's part of zoning, and certainly we are not in opposition to the county regulating uses in the county. That is certainly within your right, and you all should exercise that to avoid concerns. Just a couple of notes, you know, when, what, what our request is here tonight is for this to not be decided tonight to allow staff. I think that there are some things that staff could address in the draft to make it clearer. I did hear reference tonight to the primary use as currently drafted. I think that the reference to the automobile wash, it doesn't say that that's the primary use. So, I think this could be interpreted as any car washes within the unincorporated portion of the county. So, if it's a gas station with a car wash, that's a very different type of a business than a car wash detailing service. And so, I think there could just be some more specificity. I did want to address Commissioner Thomas's comment and request on the, the distance to, to make sure that everyone is clear. As we read the, the code provision as it's drafted, it's two and a half miles from any property line. So, that's really drawing a five-mile radius that if there's a car wash, and again, I don't think it's clear as currently drafted, if it's a car wash attached to a gas station, or if it's a standalone car wash, within five miles of that, you could not have a new car wash. The county has adopted codes, and we did send an email and submit it into the record. And, and I thought that it was interesting. Certainly, there was the small box discount, you know, that regulation. When you look at some of the other distance regulations in the county, the adult entertainment, that is a half-mile distance requirement. We are talking about five times that for a car wash. Similar for pawn shop, it's 1,000 feet. We're talking about a significant difference in a car wash. When you've got a county, based on my math, this would be, even with the six that are in the hopper, you would maybe have one car wash for, I had to redo the math, but I think it came out to about one per 12,000 people. That is, it, it's not a significant proliferation, and we would say that the market forces really are driving newer, improved car washes. We're seeing a demand for that. They are employment centers. They are a service for the county residents. And we would just strongly encourage you to please push pause. Again, not saying to not regulate at all, but I think that there could be other regulations and, and, and approach that we would certainly be happy to work with staff to maybe understand the concern a little bit better and maybe partner with some of the industry leaders to be able to address the concerns. So, our request would be to push pause, not make a decision tonight, maybe have the ordinance modified a bit. I do appreciate the acknowledgement that the current applicants are vested. I think that it could be helpful to also have that specified in the ordinance to avoid any confusion down the road. And we would, again, be happy to answer questions to the extent that we can. But just really, when, when, when we have a county that's growing, you all are doing a great job of attracting employers. You are doing a great job of attracting businesses. And I just hope that there's thoughtful consideration to the message that this sends when it's a service provided to residents and it's not a high volume that we have. And certainly, we want to encourage the newer technology in businesses and employment opportunities. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Commissioner Anglin?
Couple of things. I would like us to look at reviewing per data that we can find, the distance that's going to be needed per number of residents that we're going to have, especially in the overlay district. With it being said, not having that, I make a motion that we table this to future date in December.
Commissioner Clemens?
I have a question in reference to, there was a proposal for a car wash on Jonesboro Road. Is that one already included in the other five, or is that something different?
Yes, ma'am. That one's vested. That, the Jonesboro Road car wash?
When did it go before planning and zoning?
It, it hasn't gone, if, if you're talking about the one on Jonesboro and Chambers, that's going to the zoning advisory board in November. So, they, they already have their application in, so they're vested. Now, that doesn't mean that they're approved. Their car wash hasn't been approved. It just means that they're not limited by this ordinance if it's adopted tonight.
Okay. So, Nancy, that's what I'm saying. If something has not been approved, they haven't even gone before planning and zoning, why, why could, how are they grandfathered in?
My understanding is that they were already in, in the process. I'm sorry. Could you, are, are they in the process or not?
They are. They are in the process.
So, they are already undergoing the process to get approval, that kind of stuff like that or what have you. That's why I'm saying they're basing their application based on the law as it is now. And that's why they would be grandfathered in.
Where are they? Shouldn't we find out where people are in the process and wouldn't that determine?
Yeah, they would do the, if the person is not in the application process now, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if they're already in the application process or what have you, it's based on the current ordinance as is. Individuals who, if this ordinance is actually passed, then those who submit an application thereafter, they, their application would be based on the new ordinance. I also want to say regarding your motion, Commissioner Anglin, I don't believe that there's a meeting set for December, so it would have to be, I believe, in sometime in November or January. Do we have a schedule for December? Oh, we do. Okay. I apologize. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, Commissioner Thomas?
I just would like this board to consider, if they consider tabling this, that we do not accept any other applications for a car wash under the old ordinances, that any application that comes in will have to wait until we settle this matter. So, we won't be flooded with people sending in applications before we make a decision, Madam Chair.
So, can we move this to the next meeting?
Well, we have to vote to table it or not to table it, because I'm not supporting to table it. I think we could vote on it now.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I would like, whichever way, we're not leaving.
I don't think we can legally do that.
But we actually have two resolutions, two requests on the floor for, and I can withdraw mine, so I'm fine with that.
Okay. So, you're withdrawing your, your request?
Well, no, what, I was trying to decide, we're working, we have two.
Well, we got, we got a motion on the floor, so-
Okay.
Yours was a recommendation.
Okay. Okay.
But you can make a motion.
I want to make a motion.
Let's deal with his motion.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor to table it. Okay, but, okay, question. Go ahead.
Does this include truck washes as well? Truck wash. Does this include truck washes?
So, the way it's read is primary-use car washes. So, this would include truck, truck washes as well, sir.
So, a truck wash in an industrial area. You're, you're saying only every two and a half miles, you can have a truck wash in an industrial area?
So, typically, when you have truck washes, they're not, they, they do exist, primary uses for truck washes do exist, but they're typically tied to some other business. So, we're talking about primary-use car washes. And it's, it's stated in the actual ordinance. It's read, "To avoid over-concentration, an automobile wash parentheses as a primary use must be separated." So, truck washes, to answer your question, yes, truck washes would be a part of that.
So, if you put a truck wash in a, in industrial area, and now we have trucks wanting to come in and have the truck washed, now we backing up traffic in industrial area to get the truck washed. So, if we don't allow another one to come in beside it, now we created another, another traffic hazard. So, I'm not sure that's the limit truck washes to two and a half miles apart, because industrial areas may want to put one across the street from each other. So, with that, I can't support, I can't support this.
We have a motion on the floor to table. We got a second. All in favor? Who, who, all in favor to table? Raise your hand. Johnny, are you not tabling it? Commissioner Holmes, you raise your hand. Okay. You, you, me. Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Table. And we're going to bring it back on the November 1st meeting. Yes.
I still would like to have put a motion on the floor to not receive any additional applications under the present ordinances that we have in place.
Can we do that?
Basically, you're asking for a moratorium until November the 1st on applications for car washes.
So, you can't do that now?
So, you can do a moratorium. Has the authority due a moratorium, yes. Has the authority due to moratorium, yes.
Moratorium?
A motion now to moratorium, to do a moratorium?
On applications for car washes, up until the decision regarding the ordinance has passed.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to put forth a motion to put a moratorium on accepting applications for car washes, truck washes for six months in Henry County.
Okay, so we got a motion on the floor for a moratorium for...
The agenda?
Okay. You can add, you can add it.
Make a motion to add to the agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add this to the agenda to place forth a moratorium for car washes and truck washes in Henry County for six months, which would give us time to determine how best to structure.
So we got a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay. Question?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, question?
Yeah, oh, I'd like to add, if we're going to do a moratorium on that, let's just put a moratorium on all new rezonies for six months. That way, we can, we can figure out exactly what we're trying to do. So no, I've just...
So you got a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, will we say applications, are we just saying zoning applications, or applications for permits through the building department? Because there's two separate types. So are we saying a moratorium on the acceptance of all applications through planning and zoning? Or applications for land disturbance permits, building permits? Because it's three different types. Are you saying all applications?
For car, was it for cars?
Are we talking about new? Car washes and truck washes, new applications.
Okay, so how are we defining applications? Because Commissioner Clemmons, you asked about one on Jonesboro.
Those won't be affected, and I think the purpose of Commissioner Thomas is that we wouldn't have an inundated amount of people coming in trying to be in the process of applications.
Okay, so that's all?
Yeah, this is specific to new processes, people coming in for a new process to be grandfathered in. Those that are already grandfathered in, that's it.
Okay, so if we, if we have an application that has been, if we have a set of plans that has been submitted to the building department, but no permit has been issued, are they, are you saying we can proceed with those or not?
Can you submit a permit, can you submit the plans for those permits, approval for those without an application?
So you submit your plans, but they, they're still pending?
So the ones that we were talking about is pending. So if they're pending, then they're not approved, they're not grandfathered in. Is that correct, attorney?
My understanding, and I need to go back and actually look to kind of find out from planning and zoning, where they're specifically at in the process. Because what happens if you, if they're in the process, based on the current law, and the law, and we're saying, hey, we're changing something, it could be considered a taken, so I just need to look at it more specifically. And then I'll send a response to you via email once I find out where the, what process specifically each applicant is in. I can give you an update as to whether they're grandfathered in or not. But just generally, based on the law as is, if an application has been submitted, then it's, the application is processed based on the law as it was when the application is submitted. So they would be grandfathered in. So that's why I feel like we're having some confusion, because I'm not sure where these individuals are, the five separate entities are in the process.
But I think Sher made a good point that because everybody's all over the place, if you just have it all stopped until we get it, that gives the attorney time to see who was in the, who's approved to be grandfathered, who's not. So you didn't say any others, that's everybody. Based on, based on the motion, wouldn't that be all permits?
That is what I interpreted, and I wanted to make sure I was correct.
For car washes and truck washes?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have it now?
Yes, ma'am.
Standard U-U, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. County manager? The resolution on the purchase of real estate?
I think the county, Nancy, are you presenting the purchase agreement?
All right.
Oh, yes. Madam Chair, that's going to be County Attorney Rhodes.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. The current, and I believe you have the packet in front of you, this packet is a resolution for purchase of the property at 12 North Zack Hinton Parkway. The terms of the agreement... The terms of the agreement is that the county would put down $100,000 in earnings funds, but the overall amount of the property is $2 million. I think the county manager can possibly speak on the purpose of this property as to why it's being obtained. In addition to that, you have a purchase and sale agreement that's attached to the document. I will let you know that I personally drafted a purchase and sale agreement for the property. Lemonade Today sent me a copy of their purchase and sale agreement for the property before the meeting. I'm actually going through their purchase and sale agreement currently. The price will remain the same, the earnest amount will remain the same, the description of the property will remain the same, but there may be some adjustment to the purchase and sale agreement as written, since the county has a version, and the Lemonade has their standardized version. So there may be things in their version that I may not agree with. So the resolution allows for, it's a description of the actual property. The price, as I indicated, will not change, but what, the resolution will allow for a purchasing agreement to actually be signed by the shared person and to go through closing. So we're still working out the small details of the terms.
Ms. Matthews, can you tell us the purpose of the purchase of this particular property?
Yes, ma'am. If the board will recall, several months back, DA Darius Patello approached the board about expanding the location that he's currently housed in. A number of our judicial offices are at capacity. And so this facility is a facility that had come up about a year ago. We were waiting to see if we were going to be able to acquire the facility, because it was actually a part of a larger acquisition. We were then notified a couple of weeks back that the property was available, and staff is ready to proceed with acquiring this facility so that we can house the functions of our district attorney's office. And we're also looking to relocate our probate court. As you all are aware, probate court is located in a building that we're going to have to have the roof replaced, and it is very limited in parking. And so we think that with this building, now that we don't have the... Initially, it was going to be a lease option, but now we have the ability to purchase the building outright. We'll be able to house not only our district attorney's office, but our probate court as well.
And this is due to the addition of the fourth judge, is, am I correct?
It is staffing, yes, ma'am.
Staffing, okay. Are there any, Commissioner Holmes?
Can you guys provide a little bit more information on this property? I wasn't aware of it, and Johnny said he wasn't aware of it. So can you guys give us more information?
Absolutely, it is the existing BBNT Bank that's in the square. We did bring forth some conversations with the board about purchasing this property. It's probably been about a year ago, maybe last year. The DA had actually, I think, reached out to some members of the board asking about this property. When we looked at it at that time, it was a part of the entire Truist acquisition, and we were told at that time that they were not interested in selling off just the one building. They wanted to sell it as a complete package. We did tell them that if the opportunity presented itself for us to acquire this property, because of it being located in the square, and because of the court activities already being in that area, we would be interested in pursuing the property. And so they reached out and said, hey, you all have an opportunity to purchase the property. We had already done an appraisal on the property. The offer price is much lower than the appraisal, but they did accept it. $2 million. That I don't have, Commissioner, but I will certainly, see if I can get that for you. You said the age of the building, correct?
Thirty, forty years old?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's pretty old. Now, what's it going to cost to renovate the building?
Well, we have a 45-day due diligence period on it. Hutch and his team, our facility maintenance director, will go in. I will say that we had done an initial assessment last year when we looked at this building. I would imagine we're still going to have to put some money in the building, but I don't want to provide a quote on the cost until Hutch is able to go in and do his due diligence.
So what's the estimated cost on furniture and fixtures, do we know?
We don't know that at this time.
So we don't have any, all we're going to do is purchase the property, but we don't have any cost outside of that?
That's correct.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, and then Clemmons?
County manager, what is approximately square footage of the building, do you know?
I'm going to... Give me one second, Commissioner.
And is Hutch in here tonight?
Give me one second, Commissioner, let me see.
Well, you can probably answer my question without that.
Okay. I don't want to guess, Commissioner, so give me a second.
I think I know.
$21,017.
Okay, thank you. My question, the reason I asking for that is, is it possible to build a 21,000-square-foot building out of brick with two stories in in that parking in downtown McDonough for $2 million?
No, ma'am, and it's a three-story building.
Excuse me, a three-story building in the city of McDonough, that location, for $2 million?
No, ma'am.
I didn't think so. Thank you very much.
An additional question, so Commissioner Clemmons, and then Commissioner Anglin?
Yes, Sher.
Yes, ma'am.
I would agree with Commissioner Wilson that we need to get the full amount. Normally, I thought this was something we would do in executive session. But I would like to know the repairs prices, and not for Hutch to just go and give us a repair amount without walking the probate judge through, so that the probate judge can identify what needs to happen for it to be turned into a courtroom, and everything that's needed for a probate judge's quarters, as well as the DA to be able to walk through. I think the DA said he needed like 16 employees moved. So do we have to make 16 offices? Do we need to make eight offices? We need a full-blown plan of what it's going to take to do the building. I know they talked about carpet. We haven't done an inspection to give us an inspection of the roof, the plumbing, because of building, so I would like to have all of that. I think this is a great price, but it is not the real price. It's the price of buying the building, but not the expense that it's going to take to occupy the building. So I would rather have the entire price.
So Commissioner Anglin had his hanging up, and then we'll do you, Commissioner Wilson, next.
Couple of questions, which district does this reside in? District three?
It should be District three. Yes, sir.
So it resides next to the McGarvey property, which is also three buildings down from my parents' place. I'm very familiar with the property. The reason I ask that is, how many of those parking spaces to which are we going to have access to?
So the way that this still is structured, it includes all of the parking spaces that's part of the bank and the adjacent property. Those are all encompass within this contract or agreement.
Okay, thank you.
That was a question, I have it.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Sheriff, we, a couple of years ago, we were talking about building an annex over in this area, and the DA and the probate judge, they were all going to move to this particular area. What happened with that?
So that is the judicial complex that the board approved to go directly across the street. Our staff worked for several months on getting proposals for the judicial complex, and honestly, we just could not come to an amount that we thought would be feasible for us to pursue and/or to bring forth to the board. So that has been placed on hold until we can identify a funding source. This will help with some of the immediate needs that the courts have today. And even when we look to do a full move of the judicial complex across the street, we can still utilize this facility. So that, we don't think that we won't have a use for the actual building once we do look to relocate all of the judicial functions.
Allow you just to start the negotiation process for a number of days to do your due diligence? Or does this resolution put you in position for closure?
We're already at a point where I think they, the county has signed a letter of intent along with the other party, and they, we've negotiated a earnest amount. And so the expectation is the closing would be within a short period of time, which is why this is brought on the agenda now, because they're ready to sell now. So I don't know necessarily if we would have the time to, over 45 days or what have you, in order to contemplate whether or not we can buy. The seller is ready to buy, seller is ready to sell now to us. So once we've already deposited the earnest money, the letter of intent is done, then we would have to start the process over, or we would lose the process to another purchaser.
That's what I was concerned about, how much time you had. And I do agree with that, we do, would love to have some more information about plumbing and electrical and those different things, it would be great. But I also know that if we made this purchase at the price that we're getting it at, we can afford to upgrade it and still save money, because there's no way we can build it for what you're getting it for. Even if it was $3 million, there's no way you can build it and have everything in place for that price. And I don't want us to lose it trying to find everything to be perfectly in order. It just would be a shame to do that, especially since you have said we had to place on hold the judicial center right now, because we're looking for a funding source to make that happen. I have been over to the DA's office. My gosh, I said, how do you guys work in here? They said, we're making it work, Commissioner, we just make it work every day. And they really do need a place to go now, and not even wait till we build a judicial center. They need space just that bad. So I would like us to consider the fact that this is a very spacious unit. Yes, it is going to take some upgrades. Yes, it is going to cost some money to make that happen. But we were getting a building for the first opportunity at a very good price to make some of that take place.
Sher, you mentioned that the judicial center was on hold because of the funding source. Well, we don't have a funding source for the Aquatic Center either, so I would still like to see us move forward with the design of the judicial center so that we can, I don't know why we put it on hold, I didn't know that. The other thing is, I thought that Nancy said that we had a 45-day due diligence on this property.
So let me clarify a couple of things. We do have the funding source for the Aquatic Center. That is a SPOS five project with an identified funding source. The purchase of this property, we do not have it under a SPOS program. And so any property acquisitions that we have, we have to bring forth to the board. And our funding sources can either be fund balance, or in some cases, ARPA funding, if it's approved by the board. One of the things that I know that this board asked us to do when the DA came before the board, was to look for spacing for him. And we've discussed several buildings. He's already done a walkthrough of this facility, and he actually brought the facility to us previously. And so that was one of the reasons we were sure that this would work for him. Also, I want to remind the board that we purchased quite a few property, properties over the last six months, and we didn't have a full project cost. We purchased the bread store right on Jodico Road. We recently acquired the Sheriff's Association Building that's going to have some improvements that are needed. The challenge that I have is that when these properties become available, we have to jump on them immediately, or we're going to lose them. There is a competitive battle to get these buildings, and we have judicial spacing issues. One of the things that, and I know Hutch had to run off to deal with something for elections, I wish she was here, but one of the things we talked about specifically with probate court is that there is an existing courtroom in probate court. What Hutch had recommended was leaving that there so that we wouldn't have to build out that BBNT building for that, because that's a fairly new courtroom. The judge, I think, and I don't want to speak for Judge Powell, but her cases are, she's not having court every single day. And so if there's a need to have those court proceedings, then she would be able to utilize that facility. The challenge we have right now is spacing. Anyone who's gone over to probate court, there is nowhere to park. And so we're trying to figure out what can we do immediately without having to continue to put Band-Aids on it. So the 45 days, Commissioner, there is a 45-day due diligence, and then after that, a 30-day closing. So it's 45 and 30.
So we have time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we need to table this?
No, and you answered the question about the courtroom, because we're gonna leave the courtroom where it is, so we don't have to build a courtroom.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, still the two, the probate judge and the DA needs to go over there with Hutch. So within that forty-five days, you can still bring back to this board, this is the additional cost, or this is what's gonna have to happen. Not that we're saying that's an issue, 'cause we got twenty-something million dollars for this, you know, to, to acquire projects, but we still should know that total amount. Okay? And then on the judicial center, I was talking about the design, I'm talking about the one across the street.
Yes, so the design, we had a committee that consisted of our SPOS team and members of the judicial courts. Our staff worked diligently with all of the proposals that came in, and just based on the cost, staff felt that it still was not in line with where they believe the cost of that type, and it was just design only, that we felt comfortable presenting that to the board. What we'd like to do is to give it a couple of months, see if maybe the cost will go down, which I don't think that it will. But I also wanna make sure that when we bring that forth, bring that to the board for consideration, that we have identified a funding source, because if not, this board's gonna ask me, "How are we gonna pay for it?" And so we've gotta work through that.
But you also could bring it to the board and say, "This is the amount, and the board needs to figure out if you're gonna find the money to build it or not, but I don't want you guys to hold it back and not bring it, because we have a fiduciary responsibility if there are needs, like you said." Commissioners, there are needs, we need this building, we gotta figure it out. We can't just keep buying up little small pieces of properties, and those are small Band-Aid fixes, when we need a big judicial center. So I would ask that, you know, you know, that you and your staff would just present it to us. And there were, David did an excellent job three years ago bringing different options of how we could find the money. I think this board could come together and do what we need to do to build a judicial center that we desperately need in this county.
Understood.
Commissioner Wilson?
Sherri, I have a question. How long's the property been for sale?
Commissioner, I am not su, I would say at least a year and a half, if not longer.
I believe Lemonade, which is the company that we would be purchasing, the seller, who we'd be purchasing the company from, they just purchased the property maybe back in August of this year.
But it has been dormant for some time, but I, I don't know, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
That's my understanding.
I'm, I'm not sure, I don't have that information.
Can we find out that information? Can we find out that information?
I will look to see if I can find the information.
What did it appraise at, Sherri?
Two-point-three, I believe, Chair.
Yeah, I would be concerned about if they knew that we were looking at it, and then somebody went and purchased it and then selling it to the county for a higher amount.
So we have a resolution, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, got, got a motion to approve, can we get a second? And this, this is, motion is to, for, for the due diligence. Correct?
No, I think this is a motion for us to purchase the property.
Okay, so we got a motion, I'll second. If no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, motion fail.
Thank you, thank you.
May I put another motion on the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we put a mo, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to have administration stay with your same price that you are have, and come back with us with the answers to the questions put forth by this board as soon as you possibly can, before your forty days, forty-five days is up, for reconsideration. I'll second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Could we amend and see if your motion, Commissioner Thomas, and see if we have to have a special call meeting prior to the next board meeting? Could you add that, would you be willing to add that to your motion?
Please.
Just to, just to handle the real estate piece?
Thank you. Would you please add to that motion the statement made by the chair?
Have a special call meeting if, in order, if they get the information back?
They can just email it.
But we still have to vote.
We can do it virtually, too.
I don't know what y'all think, how to get the information. What do you understand that to mean, Sherri?
I understood that Commissioner Thomas made a motion, you seconded. Chair Harrell asked Commissioner Thomas to amend her motion to add language that in the event we're able to provide this information before the next meeting, that we will have a special call meeting for real estate matters only. And that's all that I have.
When is it, the next meeting, it's when?
November first would be the next board meeting.
But that wouldn't even be within forty-five days, so that's more than enough time. That's like fifteen days.
I, I feel confident that we can provide information. I just don't know if Hutch is gonna be able to give you all details in terms of what the true cost will be for the building improvement. So that may be a little bit longer. Okay, so let me make sure that I understand the questions that we're supposed to be providing back to the board. Commissioner Home asked the seller who purchased the property what the cost was. Commissioner Wilson asked, "How long has the property been dormant, or how long has it been for sale?" I wanna confirm that the square footage is twenty-one thousand seventeen. Commissioner Clemens asked that we allow the probate judge and the DA to do a walkthrough and identify what their needs are. And then I believe someone asked for repair cost. I think that was Commissioner Wilson, what the cost of repairs would be. And we will work as diligently as we can to identify that. Did I miss any questions?
So when we talk about the needs of, of what the DA and the probate court would, probate would need, are we also talking about fixtures? Because I know one of the, the issues at probate is that they have run out of space to maintain records that they are required by law to maintain.
So once we relocate Probate Court, the front part of it will be the courtroom. The rear of that building, Hutch wants to make it court records. And so we'll be able to not only house probate, but some of the other courts who are having the same similar issue. So what we're looking to do is take these buildings that we have, and if parking is an issue there, that's gonna be more of the storage for the county. But again, the biggest issue is getting the roof replaced on that probate building, and that's one of the things that we've gotta get done. Did I miss any other questions?
Johnny had asked for outfitting costs to the facility.
Okay.
And, and the question that Commissioner Anglin asked about the parking, there are other buildings that go with that parking, I believe, Commissioner Anglin. So this piece is separated from that. So what happens when those buildings are purchased and then they need to have parking? I mean, do they, we say they can't park on our parking, 'cause we bought the parking that goes to another building? Have we done a survey to see if you can break up the parking or where the parcel is? I'm not really comfortable considering that this was not drawn up by a real estate person, it was drawn up by Nancy, and we don't have, you know, all of that information as well. My concern is that I know we need it, the money is there, but I don't want, want us to rush to purchase something without having all the details.
I think, I wanted to clarify, because I know you wanted to do a motion for reconsideration. The board, the board has already voted against the current legislation, which is to actually do the purchase in agreement. So what the board would need to do at this point is rescind the board's prior vote and table or table the vote to a future date. So first you would need to move to rescind the vote that you just made, and then table, move, table the vote for a future date. If you, I mean, that's up to you, but that would be the proper.
You want me to rescind the reconsideration motion?
No, 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 I'm sorry. We rescind the vote denying the purchase of the property. After we rescind the vote to deny the purchase of a property or what have you, we can bring this back to the board and at that time, or we can vote on it at that time. But right now, we have a vote that basically failed to purchase the property. So we can't move forward, 'cause you already voted against purchase of the property.
I'd like to put forth the motion before this board to rescind our vote of resolution number, what's the resolution number, Sherri?
You can just say the resolution approving the purchase.
Approving the purchase, thank you.
Denying the purchase.
Denying the purchase, thank you.
Yeah, you said approve, you said deny.
No, 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 no. Commissioner Thomas, you're rescinding your vote, which was a motion to approve, and that was not approved by the board. Your vote was to approve the purchase of the property. So you're rescinding that vote.
Yes, it's fail.
Okay, and, and, I'm sorry, let's go back. The board voted not to purchase the property. That vote not to purchase the property needs to be rescinded. And then you're gonna add that back on the calendar for a future date to vote on, because right now, as it stands, the board has said not to purchase the property, which is what was on the agenda. Does that make sense? And then we can have the vote again, we can bring it back before the board, but right now, there's a vote on the, excuse me, you all voted not to purchase the property.
We could really just move on and bring this back on the first meeting of November.
But you've already voted not to purchase the property.
Right.
So she needs to rescind it.
Let her rescind the motion, please.
You can rescind, I'm sorry, go ahead. Commissioner, I'm, I don't mean to interrupt.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the vote of approval of the property purchase.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas, you want to rescind your motion?
I do.
Okay, second. All in favor to rescind the motion? Can we get a raise?
We can rescind it, she said, because.
Okay. So y'all.
I, I, Chair Harrell, what, what I would suggest, because the board has already acted on it, if you all would like for staff to bring this back, make a motion to direct staff to bring this back, 'cause it's not a zoning matter, so you don't need to rescind it.
I would like to make a motion that staff would bring this back at the first meeting, November first meeting with all of the corrections. And because this one has been denied, you can change this resolution and bring back another resolution.
I second. All in favor? Okay, motion carries, all right, thank you. Yes, pretty much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, November first. November, November first.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. So we're gonna have an update on the local option sales tax. Presenting will be the county manager, Ms. Matthews, the county attorney, Ms. Rowan, and financial services director, David Smith.
Good evening again, Madam Chair.
Vice Chair and members of the board. This evening, myself, county attorney Rowan, and our financial services director, David Smith, would like to provide an update to the board on the local option sales tax renegotiation. We're going to tag-team the presentation, because there's many pieces to this update. But I do want the board to know that this is simply an update in terms of where we've started, where we are, and what the next steps are. So at this time, I'm gonna pause, allow Attorney Rowan to give an update on the purpose, the legal re, legality as it pertains to loss, and then David will present to the board where we are in terms of our lost negotiations. So I'll step away and let Ms. Rowan present.
Like the county manager indicated, I'm just gonna go over briefly with you the law regarding lost nego, renegotiations. So basically, the local option sales tax process, the county has the duty to initiate the renegotiation process on behalf of all the eligible parties, to include the cities. The eligible parties in this circumstance, which are qualified cities, are the city of Locust Grove, the city of McDonough, Stockbridge, and the city of Hampton. After the renegotiation process is initiated, the county and cities have sixty days to renegotiate the distribution certificate once negotiation commence. If agreement is not reached, then the law requires that the county or cities to submit to a non-binding mediation, a non-binding arbitration, or another alternative dispute resolution. The governing authority and the qualified cities have until December the thirtieth of 2022 to come up with an agreement on loss, or loss, the current loss, before the current loss expires. The laws that are actually kinda written out regarding that, there's a condition precedent regarding loss. You have to adjust the annual mileage for ad valorem taxation of tangible property. You have to compute the mileage rate required to pay for services, excluding loss as an additional revenue service. And then you have to reduce the taxes needed to pay for services by an amount equal to the lost revenue. So that's the conditioning precedent that has to happen prior to you. The loss is based, there are certain criterias set out in OCGA Section forty-eight dash eight dash eighty-nine B one that has to be followed when contemplating loss. Number one, the service delivery responsibilities of each political subdivision to the population servitor of political jurisdiction is served during normal business hours, conventions, trade shows, athletic conventions, and inherent value to the community of certain businesses in the unincorporated areas of the county, and the obligation of all residents of the county for the maintenance and prosperity of the central business district in the unincorporated areas of the county. The service delivery responsibilities of each political subdivision to the resident populations of the subdivision is one of the cri, the second criteria that has to be considered. The existing service delivery responsibilities of each political subdivision, the effect of a change in sales tax distribution on the ability of each political subdivision to meet its short-term and long-term debt, the point of sale and use which generates the tax to be apportioned, the existence of intergovernmental agreements among and between the political subdivision, the use by a political subdivision of property taxes and other revenues from tons, some taxpayers of subsidized the cost of services provided to other taxpayers of the levian subdivision, and number eight, any coordinated plan of county and municipal service delivery and financing. And all of the criterias can be found on the OCGA Section forty-eight dash eight dash eighty-nine B one through eight. So the, what we've done so far, the county initiated the renegotiation process for loss. On July the nineteenth of 2022, there was a meeting between the county and the cities to agree on the renegotiation process for loss, which did occur. On August the twenty-fifth of 2022, the county's position on the loss distribution was presented to the cities. On August the thirty-first, the city's position on loss distribution was presented to the county. Thereafter, we had two mediations with the cities. The first mediation occurred on September the twelfth of 2022, and the second mediation occurred on October the fifth of 2022. So basically, the county is in compliance with the, the process as required. So we initiated the renegotiation, the county and cities, we had sixty days to negotiate. If an agreement wasn't reached, the law required the county and cities to submit to a non-binding mediation, a non-binding arbitration, or another alternative dispute. The county, in this case, we've The county, in this case, we've submitted to two non-binding mediations, so we're in compliance with OCGA 48-8-893, 8D3. But at this point, we still have not reached an agreement on the actual percentage to be divided between the cities and the counties. And I'm going to actually turn it over to David now, who's going to talk about it next.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners in the Henry County community. I want to give a historical perspective first. Back in September of 2019, Commissioner Holmes had asked both county attorney at that time, Jock Stetter and myself, to give a presentation on loss before these actual negotiations began. At that time, we talked about the current loss distributions, because there was some concern about whether the cities were receiving the appropriate amount. We demonstrated at that point in time that the amounts were fair, equitable, and that everyone was actually receiving higher than their distribution percentages, but still well within what they should be receiving. So, I want to talk about our current distribution. What you see on this chart is that back in 2012, when there were negotiations in 2013, we allowed at that time a two-year roll-in period before getting to the current 66 distribution. We had 65, 35, and then it became 66, 34, where we allowed the cities, based upon whatever was negotiated, and based upon whatever population growth was estimated, that they would receive increasing amounts based upon what their population was going to be. And it shows where, on average, the effective rate was about 66% to 34%. As of fiscal year '21, and mine is on a fiscal year basis, not calendar year basis, as loss is received, where everyone is at the 66, 34 percentile. Let's talk about loss collections. This loss shifts the primary tax burden from the property owners of this great county to visitors and residents. So, I'm going to direct your attention to the next slide. Where you see these distributions, under this current distribution, where we're talking about more than $300, $300 million over the past 10 years, everyone has received 66% and 34%. The sales tax just last year collected $51 million one year ago. This agreement was reached prior, and this is back during that time of the prior census. We were able to reach an agreement prior to involving a judge, prior to doing any arbitration, to resolve our disagreements on our own, through mediation, and that's what we did at that time. Here are the three loss negotiation issues. Over the next 10 years, loss is forecast at $627.5 million. These are the issues, does the distribution provide fair and equitable distribution? Is the current distribution meeting the intent? And do we apply the eight minimum criteria? Now, I use big words up at the top, but it really boils down to this. The major source of misunderstanding is we cannot agree on a percentage to determine what that distribution is that's fair and equitable. Let me get to this one. Our county attorney, Ms. Rowan, talked about mediation. Henry County and the four cities began negotiation in August, mediation in September, with the goal of working together to find a solution for the entire county. The county has met our statutory obligation, as the county attorney has spoken to, to engage in alternative dispute resolution. The cities have rejected all offers in an effort to force public arbitration. We are not obligated to go to public arbitration, and I certainly advise against any such proposal. It's a lose-lose for the county. First, it's non-binding. When the cities lose, they are not bound by the decision for a new agreement. Second, should the cities win, it's their goal to hold it against the county publicly. Public perception is very valuable. If the county and the cities reach no agreement by December 30th, loss collections will end. Local sales tax rate falls from 8% to 7%. The inability to reach an agreement undermines our goal and our commitment to looking after the best interest and outcome for our residents, and creates uncertainty for everyone involved. Only a subsequent voter referendum could return the lost sales tax collections. Let's talk about property taxes without loss. Because the loss represents a major source of revenue, especially within the cities, local officials would be faced with a difficult decision without it. On this slide, I wanted to show that for us, it makes 18.2% of our general fund budget. That's $37 million that we'd have to find to replace. This is what the cities would have to find to replace in their budgets if we can't come to an agreement. That revenue reduction is a significant impact to everyone. So, what is the process without loss? Final dispersment to the cities and the county from the previous loss will be in January of 2023. Everyone would be faced with approximately one to two years of significant revenue loss. These are the timelines for what would have to happen. I'm prepared and happy to respond to any questions you may have.
One second. Is there anything else from either one of you all?
Yes. Have something else to say. Like the purchase and sale agreement from the seller today, I got three resolutions also today from three of the cities concerning loss negotiation. And I'm going to pass those out to you now. Specifically, we, I got today a resolution from the city of Hampton that was passed on October 11th of 2022, a resolution from the city of Locust Grove that was passed on October 12th, and a resolution from the city of McDonough that was passed on October 6th of 2022, in which the resolutions, after having an opportunity to read them, basically states that they approve a loss amount for, of 34% for the cities and 66% for the counties, which is the current rate, and that if the county doesn't accept their proposal by tomorrow, then the city is moving to non-binding arbitration. And I'll pass these resolutions out to you.
Okay, all right, so, so this is how I like to handle this here. We're going to start, first of all, with Madam Vice Chair, Thomas, if you have any questions or comments. And then we're going to go by the districts. Commissioner Wilson, District 1, Commissioner Clemens, District 2, Commissioner Anglin, District 3, and then, of course, Commissioner Holmes, District 5. So, Madam Vice Chair.
Okay. Question to our county manager. And some of these may be sounding a little redundant to you, but if you would tolerate me for just a moment. You and your team, and when I say team, I do it mean your legal and your financial department, so I'm just going to use the word team, okay? Were authorized to represent the county and put forth presentations to the city on behalf of the county. That has been completed, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Now, you made presentations. During those presentations, did you or did any of your team, to your knowledge, make any promises about anything that this county would be doing?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and did you leave open the door for negotiations to take place in reference to loss? When I said negotiation, you made, let's just say, one presentation, it was unacceptable. You put forth maybe a second one to try and come to some resolution. So, did you open door negotiation?
Yes, ma'am, multiple offers were made, were presented.
And the reason I ask that question, because I have been stopped, county manager, and I'm just directing it to you on behalf of your team, and said in places, be it at the grocery store, Walmart, you all are taking our money from me. I said, we're not taking anything from you. Those were presentations made on behalf of the county, but you have acknowledged here today that they were presentations, but no promises made on behalf of the county, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and I can say to this audience, and I'm saying again, I've said it publicly before, I asked someone, did they want me to take a microphone and say, we have not voted, this board, in any percentages, percentages, to give anybody. All we've done is empowered our team to start negotiation and presentations, okay? And at this point in time, from your summation, it appears that your presentations have not been received at this point in time. And we're trying to get to a point of what we can do to work with our municipalities. And David, you have put up numbers here that are a little bit frightening. No one wants to be in a position to lose this type of money. And there should be a way for us to find an agreement to work together. We've done that before, we've worked it out before. And there was never, there was never, since the time I've been on this board, a time when we had to go to a legal apparatus to come to settlement. We found a way to work together, and I'm certainly hoping we can find a way to work together again. Another question I wanted to ask, county manager. When we think about what we have to do with the lost dollars that we receive, it's for the entire county, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there, when we think about the sheriff department, is the sheriff department isolated to just the unincorporated, is it for all of Henry County?
It's for all of Henry County.
So, whenever anybody used that, Henry County is responsible for that, or we're looking at that budget.
That is correct, the board sets the budget for the sheriff.
We set the budget for the sheriff, I just picked that one because that's the one I know. And I do want to ask another question, once you gave your presentation to the cities, have you received back from them something in writing that we can consider, the board of commissioners? If they were not happy with what you presented to them, have you received in writing, not what we have here today, something back that you can share with us to consider?
Nothing that has been submitted to me in writing beyond the mediation discussions that we've had.
So, you had discussions, but there's nothing that you can give to me, and I am one of the ones who like research and paperwork, that you can email to me to understand where the differences are?
So, the cities did during their presentation on August 31st. They presented to county staff the city's position regarding the loss distribution. That was after the county's presentation on the 25th. Subsequently, following those presentations, we went into mediation, where a mediator came in, and we spent the good part of a whole day going back and forth in terms of a percentage that we felt we could present back to the board and/or the cities could agree to. But beyond the mediation discussion, I have not received anything further from any of the cities.
And the reason for that question is, I want to know what it is that the city need from us in order to make this work. Now, I don't want to go, well, you all taking away my money, that's what I hear. You all making decisions to take money away, and I'm saying, no, we have not. But I do want to know what the city needs from us, and what are they trying to accomplish? Not just a percentage, but if they need to buy a bigger animal shelter, they need to buy their own judicial center, they need to do something, we need something to consider. And you're saying at this point in time, beyond their presentation, you have nothing you can share with this board for us to consider?
So, beyond the presentation and what they offered during mediation, there has been nothing else offered beyond that final mediation meeting number two that we had on October 5th?
Okay.
And then the resolutions that Attorney Rowan presented to you all this evening that she received today.
Okay, because I would like that information, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, I'm going to be a minute. Every one of us up here, we present, we represent every citizen in this county. Unincorporated, incorporated, we represent them all. So, we go through these, and of course, back and forth, we heard what we've been through. So, I pull up the, I pull up the SPOSH report, and in it has, one of the biggest criterias is population. So, I pulled up the population that was put together by the census in 2020. And what I found, what I found out, the county on the unincorporated is at 68.7% in 2020. The incorporated areas are 31.29. And so, I put the pencil to the paper and figured out, how can we get to these numbers? So, we go from 66, how do we get to these numbers of 68 and 31? Well, in this case, it'd be 69 and 31. So, I asked staff to put together a, David, you call it a roll-in period, I call it a slide scale, from starting next year, going from 66%, moving forward, we're putting in 3/4% a year till we get an average of 69%. And I believe the, I believe it come up to 69.14, is that correct? So, this is what staff come up with to get the percentages of divisions between the city and the county to match the population that was put before us by the Census Bureau in 2020. So, if you could, David, go over this and explain how this is going to work.
Basically, Commissioner Wilson was recommending a quarter percent increase each year with, from year five through 10 being at 70%. And that's, so that on an effective rate, that would average 69, 31, which approximate the current population, which is one of the criteria that you can use to determine loss distribution.
So, with that, Madam Chair, I recommend that we look at this to move forward, because this is probably the closest that we're going to get for meeting the criterias. And I think it's fair, I think it is a good compromise, I think it's something that the cities need to consider.
Okay, so, I have a question before we move forward. David, on this particular slide here, it shows 17.7 million, and each year it progresses upward. Currently, right now, what are the cities receiving?
Currently, right now, the cities receive approximately 17.4 million, with the current 66, 34, a distribution percentage, but that was based on the prior collection.
Okay, so, this would not be a loss, this would actually be a gain?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, Commissioner Wilson, would you like to put this in form of a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I'll make a motion that we, the board, approves this chart for the loss negotiations, division for the cities, for this chart right here, 69, 31, in a 10-year period.
So, you got a motion?
A second.
Got a second? All in favor? Okay, so, this proposal carries. Oh, discussion. I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Stephanie.
Oppose, I don't know if you have.
Okay, does anybody oppose?
I oppose.
Okay, so, we got one opposed, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, he voted for it, okay, so, so she opposed, okay. All right. Yeah, so, Commissioner Clemens, go ahead.
I would just like to say, I haven't seen the county's proposal for distribution. As a commissioner, I think that we should have seen the county's proposal for distribution, I haven't seen that. And my number one goal is to keep property taxes down for all taxpayers. That's city taxpayers and county taxpayers, because they're all county taxpayers. And so, I want to make sure that it's a reasonable distribution. I think that it's premature for us to vote for this when we've not even allowed the cities to see this, the cities could see this, and this could have been your proposal for the distribution. So, I haven't even seen anything. And then, the one that the cities proposed in this paper that we just got tonight, that's keeping it as it is, correct? Yeah, and so, are we sure that this is going to not affect the cities at all in 2023? If they're, if they're dropping to 33.20. If they're, if they're dropping to 33.25%, is that below what they had? I think it was 33.33%.
So the initial split was 66, 34, but because of the amount of growth?
Correct.
That's why their amount is actually greater.
No, yeah, but we need facts on that. It's just been too many things that's said tonight that, and I'm not talking about you necessarily, Sharon.
Okay.
That we have to be factual on this. Who drew this up?
So this, this information comes from our financial services department.
So this right here came from our financial services department?
Yes, ma'am, this is.
So the answer, who drew this up? Our financial services drew this up?
Right, at the request of Commissioner Wilson. So Commissioner Clemens, on the 7th of September, we presented to the board in executive session potential litigation regarding lost.
Right.
And one of the things that we presented was what we knew to be at that time, the proposal from the cities. Because they mentioned arbitration, we felt that, hey, we needed to make you all aware that, hey, look, there is a strong potential that we may not come to an agreement. And while we were not in support of arbitration, we wanted you all to be aware of that.
What was the proposed, what was the county's proposed distribution amount? Do we know?
Yes.
I don't know if you can put that on screen.
So Commissioner Clemens, the initial amount that we presented to the board, based on our consultant's review, the initial ask was an 80-20 split. That was the initial presentation. After our presentation, the cities came back, and I recall that their split was actually flipped to where the county would be 34% and the cities would be 66%. But there was also some conversations about how the county administered their service delivery strategy, and specifically the districts. In my recollection of that, the cities indicated that if the county could fix that piece, then their request would be the 66, 34. And I hope I'm not misspeaking, let's see.
Final offer was 70, 30, and that's what it impacts for us.
So the county's final offer was 70, 30. Commissioner Clemens?
Okay, that's what I'm saying, 70, 30. And the cities said that they would lose funds based on that. I would love to see the cities' numbers, because what I don't want to do is, I don't want property, the cities to have to raise property taxes because they're losing money.
And I'll send the presentations, and I won't, because I think it's a good question in terms of what numbers we're talking about. So when we made that final 70, 30, the county gave up a 4% net percentage point. And that would have been $25.4 million over 10 years. And that was in an attempt for us to reach an agreement. One of the things that I've heard from the commissioners specifically is, we don't want the cities to lose monies. And so every proposal that we've presented beyond our initial proposal was based on making sure that they didn't fall below that original current fiscal year numbers.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to make sure, that every proposal that we made outside of the initial one, which was just an initial proposal, that they would not lose any money. And so based on this one, our financial department is saying, based on this, the city wouldn't lose any money, not even this year, even though their percentage goes down.
Not even this year? Even though the percentage goes down. They might even earn more if we collect more in sales tax. But I wanted to point a clarification, though, Commissioner Clemens. So the cities not only would have to implement a property tax, we would have to also increase our millage rate. So it's not just about the cities, it's about the county, and for the county citizens who currently have enjoyed over the past five years, a 12, a millage rate that hasn't been risen at 12.733, we'd have to add another 3.5 mils to that amount, just to collect the lost revenue.
Right, I just, I just have a, I just want us to remember that all citizens are county citizens, and we cannot separate city citizens from county citizens. And so when we negotiate, we're not negotiating just for the county. You guys may get a check from just the county, but I represent everyone that lives in Henry County. And so we have to look at the entire county and make sure that. So I think that the city needs to take, and I voted, this is passed already, but I voted against it because I think it's unfair that it was presented tonight, and that the city has not seen it, and I think there should, just like they sent this email to us, if this was done by our staff, I wish that we had a Senate and say, do you have anything to say about it, just so that we can start working together and, and working together better. And I know you guys did your job, and thank you, you followed the law. But at some point, when people don't understand and they think that they are being shortened, you gotta be humble and just kind of bring them along, okay? So I would rather, it's passed now, but I want to see what the cities have to say about this.
Commissioner Angler?
No comment.
No comment. Commissioner Hoes? Uh, no, no comment, okay. So we received these today, correct? So just as we received these today, I, I, they haven't received this, because this was something that Commissioner Wilson had asked you all to put together.
That is correct. And so I don't want the board to think that we did, we provided to the cities what we believed, based on conversations with the board, we had the ability to present. Commissioner Wilson did inquire through financial services this morning, hey, I don't want to see this lapse, can you run numbers for this? And so because that was not a vote of the board, we could not present to the cities something that the board had not taken action on.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So what I, I would like to do from, from this point is, Stephanie, I know that we don't have anyone signed up for public comment, is that, that correct?
Correct.
But we do have some of the mayors that are here. And out of respect, and I've always talked about working together and collaboration, my one main point was to make sure that the cities didn't lose any money, and I've said that from day one. So what I would like to do is give the opportunity for representation from the cities. I know that Mayor Tarpley reached out to me today from the City of Hampton. I would like to invite her up to, to, to say a few words. I'm going to.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, good to see all of you. So I've sat back and I've listened to the presentation made by staff, and everybody continues to say, we want to work together, we want to make sure that nobody is harmed and that nobody, property taxes go up. But based on the presentation that Mr. Wilson has put together and had staff put together, we will lose. Everybody understands, going from 35% to 34 is a loss. That's simple math, I, I don't, I think elementary school children can understand that. So I'm standing before you as one of the representatives of the city. My city is the City of Hampton. We are the smallest fish in the pond, but we have the greatest potential for growth. Loss is a forward-looking projection and negotiation. And I don't think that any consideration has really been given in regards to the direction that the City of Hampton is going in at this point in time. Right now, we have about 1,200 homes to come online with, within the next 18 months. Growth is happening inside of our cities. I don't, I don't want to take anything away from the county, because I appreciate the choices and the decisions you guys have to make. But as Commissioner Clemens said, our citizens are also the citizens of the county. When you start to reduce the share of our loss percentage, you start to take away from your citizens, your constituents, just like they're ours. And I find it to be unjust that, first of all, we were insulted with the first presentation of 80-20, now you're going to reduce us down from 34% to 20%? What, what even, that was a slap in the face. I spent all day here in this building, thinking I was doing a good faith negotiation with my county. I didn't have any representation, I was here, some of the other elected officials was here. But staff said that that is where they had the ability to negotiate 80-20, based on what you guys had told them, based on what you said you were willing to go at that point in time. And I'm looking and saying, really? 80-20? Is that all the citizens of Hampton is worth to you? Because as you know, four of us have to split the percentage, four cities have to split the percentage that is negotiated here. And this is a 10-year, 10 years. In 10 years, I, I might be paying Sandra. In regards to population. But let's just take population off the table, because loss is negotiated on eight points, not one. The City of Hampton being the smallest, but collectively as cities, we represent 55% of your commercial property, your property tax. We're constantly adding to your digest, so that you do not lose. It's not going to harm at all if we remain the status quo of 66, 34. I saw you, Chair. Thank you so very much. I hope you guys take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Tarpley, City of Hampton, thank you. We have Mayor Sandra Vincent from the City of McDonough. Everybody has three minutes. Yeah, Mayor Ford, I'm looking at you, because you get long-winded.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, friends, because I do consider you all friends. It is very rare that I find myself without words, and I am stunned tonight that we would take a vote before hearing the words from the mayors. Commissioner Clemens, thank you for your stance on this vote. I really appreciate what you've said on this evening. We started this process sitting on that dais along with Chair Harrell, and we all said at that time that it was our deep desire to work together. That has been our resounding voice from day one, that we wanted to collaborate and be in unison. As cities, we have recommended that we go into non-binding arbitration, because so far, none of this has happened in the daylight. It's not an effort to make the county look bad, but yet it is an effort to get citizens engaged, because guess what? You say the city doesn't lose, but this would require that McDonough and every other city increase their tax base. We have as a philosophy selected not to increase the millage rate of our citizens. That has been offset by sales tax. But because the county wants more sales tax, in order for us to recoup from that, we would have to increase property tax for our citizens. That is not fair and equitable. That is a problem. Not to have a public discussion about this is a problem, because many of our citizens don't even understand this process. And I've heard some things tonight which indicate to me that there may be a lack of understanding as far as what the state law says concerning lost. This is not a property tax, this is a sales tax. The sales tax is driven by commercial activity. Where is the majority of the commercial activity? It resides within your cities. And we understand that we are a county where all of our citizens reside within the county, but at the same time, we also understand that there is a, a deeper problem with taxing individuals within the county, or subsidizing the taxing of, of individuals within the cities in order to supplement the county. There are eight categories that we are allowed to charge lost negotiations, or should be used for the purpose of determining how these taxes are going to move forward. And unfortunately, we, we haven't even discussed on this evening or any other time what those categories are. I've talked with Commissioner Wilson, and he was naming a number of areas which are covered by Henry County, but they are not statutorily listed as areas that should be considered using lost dollars. So while there are some services provided by the county, that only the county provides, those are not the areas that are used in the statutes to cover lost dollars. And, and I don't know when that conversation has taken place here, but I'm hearing from different people that they don't understand what the statutes say. And when we brought it up as a point of negotiation in our meetings, what we heard was, we disagree on what the statute states. That's another reason to have an arbitration that is non-binding in a public discussion. I am deeply offended by the fact that it would even be stated that the cities would somehow get together to try and make the county look bad. I, I, I just, I, I can't even comprehend that. That is not the intent. My role, and every other mayor's role here, is to protect their citizens, your citizens. And by having to increase the tax base, that's not protecting our citizens. That is incorporating an unfair disadvantage upon the citizens of every city in Henry County. We heard, and I'm done after this, we heard tonight that there was not adequate money to construct a judicial center. I would hate to think that we are somehow utilizing the projected dollars from lost as a way in which to fund a judicial center, because that would mean that every citizen in Henry County would be double taxed, because Henry County taxes, every city taxes, with tho, with the exception of those who are going to start. That is unfair for the citizens of Henry County, and it is most definitely unfair for those cities who carry the majority of the revenue from these tax dollars.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Vincent.
Thank you.
Okay, I know that Mayor Price is not here for, oh, is he? Okay, so I didn't know if Mayor Price was coming or Tim Young was coming. Come on up, Mayor Price, I didn't, I didn't see you come in. I, I know Tim told me that he was going to speak on, speak on your behalf. Come, come on up to the mic, Mayor Price, City of Locust Grove.
Yes, ma'am. I've got a little bit of.
Get, get, get over on one side, Tim, you get on the other side.
I'm only attempting to help you, I have a little bit of surgery, and if I get to jabbering too fast and too often, some bad may happen. So I'd appreciate if I could yield my thoughts. We talk every day, we've talked today, we talk every day about this, and I appreciate what everybody's doing. I know it's time-consuming, and it looks like we never get to an end, but there is an end, and we just all have to get together, and we can make it work, we can. But I'm, if you're sorry, you chair, I'm letting Tim talk to me.
Yes, okay. All right, Tim.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board of Commissioners, for letting us be here and to give us the opportunity to speak on this subject. We have been in, we have been upfront with our mayor and council. Will my council stand up? Because I think I have the entire council here. We stand in unison, along with our cities, in terms of this. And by the way, our, our attorney cleared this for this, because we've already acted on our, on our section of this. So we're, we stand united, the cities, in our position. We did actually decrease our percentage in between, in, in 2010, in, in recognition that the county grew. Now we're growing, we're all growing. In fact, 2021, the estimates are, we are now almost 32%, you're 68. We're, we're continuing to grow faster than the county, and so, but we're going, so we are being cut. If you're going to go by this metric, this one measure of eight measures, which we which we used and used factual figures. Your consultant, albeit creative, used figures that were not right. The population of Henry County is not three hundred and sixteen thousand. The tax digest isn't doubled. You counted this double, which effectively lessened us to seventy-five percent of a person. And that was not correct. And we posed the metrics using facts. And we weighted them all equally. We would like to have seen some results about what you weight differently. How do we weight these to come up with a score? So instead of all these figures about seventy-seven percent, eighty percent to the county, seventy-seven, seventy-three, we just said, look, we're not going to go try to argue anything higher. We just want to keep it as it is. And that's what is before you now. Because if it goes lower, the City of Hampton and the City of Locust Grove are going to be the ones that get cut the least, cut the most in this. We're going to be the ones that are going to be cut. We're the ones that are going to be raising taxes. I mean, everybody's going to be tough. Everybody's going to lose money. Everybody's going to be raising taxes. But we're going to be cut drastically. And we have the biggest retail generator in the entire county inside our borders that we serve with police. We pick up the trash. We cut the grass. We provide streetlights. So we would just like to let you know, we're standing united. We want it to just remain as is. Thank you. Our percent is five point nine four percent of every penny generated in this tax. We get the least of every city. And what this proposal is will cut us to three percent or less. Just to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor Price. Thank you, Tim. Last but not least, we have the City of Stockbridge. And we're going to have Mayor Ford come forward.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. I first want to let you know that the resolution, we actually did a resolution. Well, I'm not sure why your attorney didn't get it. But we did a resolution pass on the October tenth, our meeting. I also want to say diddle to my fellow cities. I'm with you. We're all together. Sixty-six thirty-four is what we asked for and what we're thinking about. Appreciate the offer of the sixty-nine thirty-one. But obviously, that has to be an offer that all of us would agree to. So let me read a couple of things here in reference to, and I'll try to stay within my three minutes as best as possible in this aspect. The county seeks seven point two million annual loss increase. Initially, it was eighty percent for the county and twenty percent for the cities despite large increase in the county revenues and in the county fund balance. The county proposal will cause a large property tax increase in the City of Stockbridge from seven point two five million to eight, excuse me, seven point two five mils to eight mils. The county proposal ignores the key role of ethics and county population, excuse me, key role in cities and the county population, jobs, commerce, history, and community life and all the measures of the eight loss criteria. The county proposal is based on litany of friction solely intended to lower municipal loss share. The county proposal ignores the well-documented data, including data of the county's own audit. Instead of the county report, uses financial data for population, population growth, jobs, normal business hours, population total digest, commercial digest, tax burden, and other measures. Henry County has failed to adhere to its own service delivery agreements. And the county has failed to establish special service districts per its own binding commitments. These failures have resulted in major subsidies for unincorporated area services, especially for roads, police, fire, stormwater, and planning and zoning. The county's own, the county loss report makes a number of equity claims, however fairness and equity. And these negotiations must be determined by using the eight criteria prescribed by the General Assembly, not fix no measures. All information in the city's report is based on verified federal, state, and county resources, sources, excuse me, and uses measurable data, population, normal business hours, population, commercial digest, supplementary power services, depth, point of sale, intergovernmental agreements, and county subsidizes for incorporated area services. Municipal share shall increase by nine point one six percent based on criteria one to six. The county has heavily subsidized unincorporated area services with property taxes from property owners in the cities per criterion seven. This must be mitigated through twenty-three point two percent loss transfer of municipal share. Otherwise, the bottom line still is the municipal share for loss should be sixty-six point three eight percent for the county and thirty-three point six two percent, sixty-two percent for the cities, which is basically sixty-six thirty-four. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Ford, for that information. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I would like to, I sat here and I listened to all the mayors, and I agree with every last one of them. So I would like to rescind my vote and go with the recommendation of the cities.
Okay, you can rescind your vote, but it doesn't negate the fact that it still was four votes?
Yeah.
Okay. County manager? I have a couple of questions. When did the City of Stockbridge pass their resolution? The City of Stockbridge passed their resolution. Let's see.
And just so y'all know, I did get a resolution from the City of Stockbridge during the meeting at seven forty-four P.M. The resolution was passed on October the tenth of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so we had October tenth, October sixth, October twelfth, eleventh, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, and the sixth. And we're just now receiving the resolutions today? That's correct. Oh, okay. All right, Sherri, go ahead.
So Madam Chair, David and I definitely want to make sure that we're providing information to the board. We're not standing here to offer any rebuttal to any comments made by the mayor and council. I want this board to understand that every option that we made was based on, obviously, having a consultant on board, but then after determining where we knew that we needed to be financially. So I want to make sure, because the public is viewing, you all are getting information, that we do clarify some of the statements that have been made specifically this evening. I want to speak specifically first to the judicial complex. I want this board to know that we are not looking to fund our judicial complex with sales tax. If you all will recall during David's presentation, only eighteen point three percent of our sales tax is collected for general fund operations. One of the things that we've talked about is the creation of a public facilities authority. That's something that will require legislative action. And one of the things that I committed to this board is that I didn't want to have to pass that on to the taxpayers. So it is still our desire to look at that as a funding source as it pertains to the judicial complex. One of the other things that I want to make sure that the board understands, and I'm just going to reemphasize, that eighteen point three percent of our general fund budget comes from sales tax. It is not the sole or primary source of our general fund operations. I think what you've heard tonight is the cities are very dependent on this sales tax, but we do not utilize our sales tax as the sole source for the funding of our general fund budget. David's going to go over a couple of things because, again, I want you all to have the information. And again, this is not to go back and forth. It's just so that you all will have the information that you all need in the event that the board wants us to provide additional information or if you all have questions. So I'll pause, let David provide some additional information, and then David and I will answer any questions that you all may have.
One question, Sherri. Has there been meetings on this with the entire board? Because I don't recall getting any.
There was a briefing during executive session, Commissioner Holmes, on the seventh, I believe, of September. It was on the timeline. But there has been no further meetings. At that time, the board was made aware of the two options. And then in early June, I did, during my county manager's comments, notify the board that we were in the middle of lost negotiations. Chair Harrell had notified the cities and that we were looking to schedule a meeting because we had to notify them no later than June thirtieth. But there has been no other meetings amongst the board.
This is my first time hearing all of this.
Well, Commissioner Holmes, with all due respect, the meeting that we discussed, that you were there, but you left. And so you were not present for the presentation that the county attorney made.
So I just want to make sure that the mayors that are here can go back and relate to their council members that staff was given permission to start negotiating. But at the time that you guys realized that it was an eighty-twenty presented to you and how ridiculous that sounded, you should have got on the phone and called the commissioners. Because I found out about the eighty-twenty tonight. And I would have rather, if we're working together, not that staff did anything wrong, because the staff did what they were instructed to go and start negotiations. Most negotiations, the attorney probably told them, you start high, you come down. You try to meet in the middle. But at the point you were offended, at the point that you saw that it was ridiculous, I would suggest going further, pick up the phone, say, Commissioner Clemmons, did you know? And then we could have probably started working on this before tonight. I'm glad it's public so that we can all make our statements publicly. But tonight was the first time that I knew that it was an eighty-twenty. Not that it was anything that staff did that they were wrong. I don't want to chastise our staff in public. Because this is not about chastising the staff. The staff was working on behalf of, let's get what we need to get, and then we can try to negotiate. But I wish that instead of, you know, there's chatter around the county, the board is trying to take money from us. No, there's a negotiation going on. And where we are now is where we're supposed to be. Healthy negotiations is when you come to the table and talk. This is healthy. No decision has been made, and this is not passed. This is not going to be it. We're still negotiating. And I agree with Commissioner Holmes. If you guys, all three of you all agree to leave it the same, leave it the same. Nobody loses. And that's what it should be.
We're not going to do that. We're going to be in order. Okay, we're going to be, yeah. Can you come up to the podium? Let's do this in order.
I believe in order. Thank you.
I just wanted to make clear that the people who were involved were not the elected officials passed that initial meeting. It was the city administrators, and it was the city attorney. My reason for being involved is that I'm serving in both capacities at this time. So it would have been out of order for a city attorney to call an elected official. It would have been out of order for a city administrator to call an elected official. In fact, there was one meeting where some of those conversations took place, and the staff that was there was reprimanded. So I'm just trying to make sure you understand that that's why we're trying to put it in daylight in arbitration so that we do have the opportunity to speak elected person to elected person. Thank you.
All right. David?
I also wanted to clarify a few points. One of the points that was made was that we didn't consider the eight criteria that was there. That's an inaccurate statement. In fact, we did consider those eight criteria. One of those happened to be population share, which presented tonight was a recommendation from Commissioner Wilson. The other is share of total property tax digest, not just commercial property, which they want to separate out. Guide says share of total property tax digest. There, we are at seventy-two point eight nine percent. That means we're providing services to seventy-two point eight nine percent of our county and cities. Share of property taxes, seventy-two point eight nine percent. Share of total expenditures, they wanted to mention. And I don't apologize for being fiscally responsible and having a very healthy fund balance as well as balancing my funds in general fund, not just utilizing sales taxes, but making certain that our citizens have a sufficient tax rate to provide them all these services. I'm not apologizing for that. Share of property taxes, seventy-two point eight nine. Share of total expenditures, seventy-six point five one. That's our share of total expenditures across this county. Supplementary powers, which is in a presentation presented by the cities themselves. This is what they agree on and came up with, sixty-nine point seven nine percent. And I adjusted our numbers to remove those items, I adjusted those numbers, to remove those items that they considered should not be there. We're still at sixty-nine point seven nine percent. They're at thirty point two. So I wanted to clarify that because the statement was made that we didn't consider them. We did consider them. And so we were just trying to arrive at a win-win solution because that was the direction of the chair. That was the direction of our board. That's the direction of our citizens across this county. A win-win solution, and that was what was presented to the cities. I want to talk about the sales tax. In the sales tax amount, they're saying they're going to lose. We started at seventeen point four million. I made certain, and we're going to grow faster than this. I made certain that we forecasted over the next ten years, a three and a half percent growth rate included in that. So that means their amount is going to grow, not getting less at three and a half percent. So I wanted to clarify those points that were brought up.
So David, can you put the slide back up that Commissioner Wilson had you all to, had you to present or that you all provided for him? Okay, so these numbers are based on the criterias that you just discussed?
Those numbers are based on the request from Commissioner Wilson. What is the population share? I did not run it based upon share of property tax digest or share of total expenditures or their supplementary powers. I was trying to come up with a fair solution, similar to what we had done back ten years ago where we allowed a two-year sliding scale before we did something. This is similar to that.
So the comment was made that because, like, the cities are the thirty-three percent, thirty-two percent, that the numbers don't add up. So help us to understand how the numbers add up, even if it's less percentage?
They add up because of the growth percentage that I calculated into each sales tax year at three and a half percent each year. That's how they add up. That's why they go from the current seventeen point four million to by year ten, twenty-one million that they're going to split. Close to twenty-two million.
But David, you only consider population in this, right?
My calculations do consider population. I have a slide where there's a population growth based upon the current growth percentage from twenty-ten.
But that's all that's in here is population?
That was one of the numbers that I utilized, yes.
So can you, the other ones that we have considers more than population?
It considers more than population.
Right, and so I'd rather do apples to apples instead of apples and oranges. So can we get that later so that we can take a look at doing it that way? And it'll be, you're looking at the same thing instead of just saying, well, I only consider population in this one because then you can't really compare it to the other one that has all of them.
So on the one that was presented by, that Commissioner Wilson asked for me to present, that's based solely on population.
Okay.
The other was based to make certain, the other was based to make certain that the cities didn't lose any of their shares.
Okay. So the one that this board voted on was not complete with everything?
That was the one that Commissioner Wilson asked for.
And that's what this board voted on?
That is correct. You all voted on the sixty-six and three quarters and the thirty-three and a quarter.
Okay.
Commissioner Wilson would be more favorable to the cities. Is that correct?
It would be favorable to the cities as well as the county.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
So we had to have two cities to agree to this, but we can move forward, correct?
It was fifty-one percent.
Fifty plus one. Fifty plus one.
Fifty plus one.
One large city, one small city.
So we can look at the resolutions. This board has plenty of time to look over the resolution, have any questions answered, and then we can come back on the first meeting in November, and make a final decision with the two cities agreeing to some number.
Uh-uh.
It looks like they're not going to agree with these, but it looks like we can, we have...
That's not how it works.
The board has already taken action on...
This one?
The 66 and three quarters and 33.
But we had to have two cities to agree.
That is correct. So what we will do is what the cities did, they sent over their resolution, we will forward tomorrow to the cities, the resolution or the action taken by the board. We will ask them to consider that.
They already sent us a resolution of what they want, and that does, and nobody loses with that. Everything stays the same. If they grow, they get more money. If we grow, we get more money. And as Mayor Vincent said, when we look at loss and we look at, you know, where the commercial stuff is, everybody knows it's down at 218 and McDonough. The only thing that the county really has is the District 2 Jonesboro Road stuff when we come to that. So, you know, the board has to vote. I just want to make sure that the record states that they've already said what they wanted, four of them.
Well, we have three, but...
We heard from four, yes.
Well, four. Whenever they sent it, they sent four.
Yeah.
So, Sherri, how...
Just wait. Yeah, I think we just, we're just waiting for, the cities have done that, I guess you guys will bring a resolution back to us, and if you bring the resolution back, as the board has majority voted tonight, then that will be it, unless the board changes. So I would like to see both resolutions brought back, if it's okay, if it's the will of the board, since there's already a majority for the other one.
So you'd like to see the resolutions that the cities provided, in addition to what Commissioner Wilson has recommended. Is that right?
That's up to the chair, she's got to do...
But I think that you had asked for David to include all of the points, all the points.
Yes, because I don't think this one, yes, so this one, David, you did an amazing job doing exactly what Commissioner Wilson asked, using the population. I would like to see you take this graduating chart and utilize the projections of everything, the population, the sales, everything, so that we can really compare what it is. And then compare that to, what's the difference in doing it that way and just leaving it the same? That's what I haven't seen. I haven't seen you say, leave it 66.75 and 30, 66 and the 34 that it is, and what does it look like over the years?
Commissioner, for clarification, the reason why we didn't present its staying status quo is our county is very dynamic. It is not staying status quo. The cost of services is continuing to increase.
I would like to vote, I would like to vote...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Clemens, I can't hear you, because there's a lot of talking behind me, so I'm sorry.
So can we be respectful and, and, and if, you know, just allow the commissioner to finish her comments?
Please present us three charts. You're going to present this chart here, that's just population and state what it is, so there's no discrepancy about what this includes. If you could do the same thing, David, with the 66, what it is now, the same way that you've done it. And then if this board, if the staff has something else, I think you had another one that you proposed, but you didn't do the other one, put up the other chart that you did tonight, that included everything, but do it gradually over the years, not from, not on the negative side, but if it's an increase, then it's an increase, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Just show us everything. I know that the majority has voted on this one, but I just want to see all of it, because they may change their vote when they see it.
Yes, ma'am.
David, what, how does it affect the county, leaving it the same?
That's what we need, don't see it.
So our cost of services continue to increase, and so...
I'm asking him the question.
And so inflation is currently at eight and a half percent. My projections are at 3.5%. That leaves a difference of 5% that I have to make up somewhere in the budget.
Well, David, I want to see it by the years, though.
Yes, ma'am.
So Sherri, can you repeat back what we are doing?
Do you want me to wait for Commissioner Thomas?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
And thank you for the question you just asked about the impact of the county. I just have a question. I heard a couple of mayors say that their property taxes would increase, and I was under the impression that at least two city has no property taxes. Am I correct or wrong?
That is correct.
We're going to let the cities speak, since they made the statement, so I'll defer to the cities who made those comments.
Is it two cities that has no property taxes?
We currently have no property tax. However, we see that our, just like everyone else, our cost is increasing. My insurance renewal for my employees went up 33%. Just, so, I mean, just like everybody else, we're facing the same budget cuts that you are. That's why we said status quo. We currently have no property tax. We anticipate that we will have one within the next two or three years. If this goes through the way it is, we're going to be cut 55% in revenues, we will have a property tax next year.
And Stockbridge, right, has no property tax?
I'll come here. That's correct. We don't have, at the current, currently, we do not have any property taxes, right? But I'm pretty sure exactly what Locust Grove mentioned, and Tim Young, it's the same thing with us. I mean, really, if inflation affects you, it also affects us. I mean, well, I mean, really. So if things, if prices going up, it's going to affect us as well. So we're no different, we all, we talked about, we're all the same county, so whatever affects you is going to affect us simultaneously. But there's no currently property tax in cities Stockbridge at this time, but who knows what the future is going to hold? We've got to play it out.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. Locust Grove and Stockbridge, you can have a seat, Mayor, there's no question. I wanted to clarify that there is no property tax in those two cities, because I heard it mentioned that some type of property tax increase could take place, and I wanted to make you know that it would not take place. And I do know that, as David said, we will have to make up some taxes that we may lose. And I'm hoping that these cities would consider, just as we have to look at how to make up that difference, and I have passed this, because I'm looking at what we have here, how we making up that difference. Somewhere along the line, we got to put on our, you know, our leadership pants and say, hey, these property taxes that you're looking at for us to look at in the county, has to be looked at in the city as well. We don't want to be the only ones looked at for property tax increases and meal tax increases, because that's not what we after. We're not after that. We don't want to do it on the county level, not trying to force it on the city level as well. You gave us a proposal, it passed, it passed, and I understand that we're staying basically where we are, and I agreed to it. And I think that's what we need to do for, at this point in time, that's where we are. You gave us that proposal.
No, that's not what y'all voted on.
Well, no, that's...
We voted on, we have, Johnny Wilson has up on there.
What was your...
This is right here.
It changed. Can I say something?
I just...
I'm trying to ask, Jenna, what was his...
That's it, right here.
That's the one you proposed?
Right.
Okay. When I saw him do, okay.
Okay. All right. So Sherri, can you repeat back to me what we're doing?
So that is a great question. The board has taken action on the proposal as presented by Commissioner Wilson, which begins in calendar year 2023, and for us fiscal year, 66.75% for the county and 33.25% for the cities. That is on a scale and will increase on the county side from 24 through 32, with this getting down to a 70/30 split by the year 2032. What I think I understood from the board is that there is a request to bring back to this board three charts. Chart number one will be population only, which I believe that would be chart one. Chart number two would be the current split, which is 66/34, which is what the current allocations are. And then chart three would be based on all of the criteria gradually over the years. If I understood Commissioner Clemens correct, and please correct me if I'm incorrect on that. I don't have any other notes, so I think that is all that I understood the request.
And that's using the percentage that Commissioner Wilson has up here, correct?
That's more than that.
No, I'm just saying, this...
Chart one would be Commissioner Wilson's, that would be population only. I think what Commissioner's, Commissioner Wilson's request was, how do we get this to where the county's at 69% and the cities are at 30.8%, 31%? That is what we developed for Commissioner Wilson. There are several other charts that exist, the original requests, the supplemental requests, but what I'd like to do is just give you all everything, the whole package, what we initially presented, what the cities presented, what the options have been, and then the sequential charts that Commissioner Clemens has asked for. Commissioner Clemens also asked for us to bring back two resolutions, one with the cities, in terms of what they've submitted to the county attorney today, and then another resolution based on what the board has already voted on. I believe that's all.
So the only other thing is that I would like for you to get this information to the board before the meeting, so that we would have the opportunity to look it over and to ask staff any questions prior to the meeting. I am interested in what it would, you know, the resolution as is, keeping it the same, how does, how does that impact the county? And how does it impact the cities? I'm just interested in what the difference would be if we, if we kept it the same, or if we went with the formula that Commissioner Wilson has suggested.
So David has read some quick numbers, and based on the 66/34 percentage, the county would give up about $3 million.
What is that? That's for one year, that's for 10 years?
Is that for 10 years?
Over the 10 years.
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years. Is that...
Yeah, but, but I want to see it on the chart, oh, wait on you. I would like to see it on a chart like this, because this says, what we're looking at is if the cities continue to grow, populations continue to grow, we're not even considering that a city might be landlocked and there may not be any more growth. We're not considering that. And so just to say this is based on population, I, that, if that's what you want to base it on, then fine, but I want to see it side by side with both of them, so...
So that's not population-based, that is strictly the 66/34. That would be your chart two. So that is not population, that is keeping it at the 66/34 over the course of the next 10 years.
And that's not population-based, that's everything.
That is...
And that's what I'm saying, so you can't look at 34% that we're going to lose $3 million for everything, but we're not going to lose anything over here, because this is just population. You can't do it like that. You got to look at both of them the same.
But, but understand, commissioners, if there is a, so if there's a $3 million over 10 years, if the county continues to grow, you still got to be able to provide that level of service. So I want the board to understand, no one has stood here and said that we're not growing as a county.
Right.
And every board member said, every resident is a resident of the county, regardless of where they live.
But Sherri, all of this is hypothetical, I'd just rather see it all on paper.
We can do it. We can get the charts back to the board.
Okay. Yeah, we can go back and forth. We put it on paper, then we have facts.
And then you make sure that you have the resolution, so we can vote on one or the other.
And then, David, make sure that if this is, if we're looking at this one, and this is population only, and then the board is looking at, well, we really don't lose, you got to have another one that's population, that's all of them. So this is population only, 66.75/33, you got to do the 66 the same way. You got to make sure that everything is the same, because this board doesn't understand it. This one doesn't even take into consideration the other stuff.
But I mean, we sent it, they...
No, they didn't rescind it.
But we voted on it.
But a resolution has to come.
But a resolution still has to come, Commissioner Thomas.
So that's been put in place, okay. All right.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So the greatest growth projected between 2020, where we are now, and 2030 would be in the cities of McDonough and Locust Grove. This projection shows Stockbridge actually having negative growth, hence why you see them having annexation discussions, and the same with Hampton.
Well, Sheriff Harrell, one more thing. One more thing. But David, we, we should, we should leave it the same, because some cities are going to have to raise their taxes without losing loss. So let them go ahead and not have to utilize this to say we're raising taxes because the county is taking the taxes away.
No, the county will continue to provide services for every resident.
Right.
Even those services that may be at the responsibility of the cities, we will provide those services.
Thank you.
And it will be at the cost of the county. One thing I want to make sure that I clarify, on that 66/34% chart, Commissioner, that is not based on a criteria. That is 66/34.
Okay, perfect.
Mm-hmm. So it's not based on the criteria that we...
When you bring the charts? This board can vote, yeah.
Okay.
We're not looking at their resolution, we're going to create our own resolution.
So, I am going to proceed with sending what the board voted on to the cities. Okay. Okay, I'm clear. Any other questions for myself or David?
And, and you can continue the negotiations, and, and when you come back, then the information that Commissioner Clemens has requested, and any of the other commissioners, please get that to us ahead of time, because that will give us the opportunity, and I, and I want you all to make sure that you keep an eye out for this information, so that when we come, that, that we're not, the questions have been answered, and it is going to be a vote.
So Chair Harrell, there are no further negotiations scheduled beyond what we've already done. If I recall, in the resolution from the cities, their resolution indicated that they wanted a decision from the county by tomorrow, which is the 19th, or they would, and I don't want to misquote it, so Nancy, please read for me specifically their language.
Well, and I don't have the language in front of me, but basically, if we, if the board does not proceed with the vote, I guess, tonight or what have you regarding the 66/34%, they're indicating that they will proceed to arbitration. Obviously, you can't go to arbitration with one party, so, I mean, I understand that they're saying that, but unless the county agrees to arbitration, there's not going to be an arbitration. And so my understanding is that, based on the discussions before, they want a three-panel calm arbitration, three, three individual panel arbitration, where we agree on three different individuals to hear the county side, the other side, and I think, as David indicated earlier, it's non-binding. So even if the panel came up and say, hey, this is it, if the cities don't agree with it, or the county doesn't agree with it, it's of no, no consequence, because it's not binding.
But we spent taxpayer dollars on legal fees.
Yes, because the arbitrators, they will definitely have to be paying. And I believe the, my understanding is the city would want the county to pay 66% of the arbitration cost.
Okay, all right. Well, Sherri, you have what you're supposed to do, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need to get approval for the minutes for September 7, 2022, board meeting?
Thursday, 7.
Okay. Any discussion, all in favor? Upcoming meetings is November 1, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. It's a regular scheduled BOC meeting. The November 15 meeting has been canceled. The November 29 meeting will take place on the first regular meeting in December at 9:00 a.m. So November 1, November 29, both will be 9:00 a.m. meetings. Meeting is adjourned.